Welcome to our budget meeting. Turn the time over to Dean.
Okay. Just gotta turn it over to you. Yeah, I'll see that.
Oh Levi, whoever.
Thanks again for coming and making time as part of the budget process. We think it's important to be here and be available as much as you want us to be. I think more than anything, we want to make sure we give you the information you're looking for to help you make the best decision for the city. So we haven't got an awful lot planned today. We want to maybe pick up where we left off as we left the meeting. And we were primarily talking about the general fund and maybe some reductions we could make in the general fund to lessen the impact. And when I say lessen the impact, lessen the proposal for a property tax increase.
That's good.
We still, we still think it's appropriate to move forward with that. But we also understand that it's, it's a tough issue. Property taxes are tough, tough issue. With that being said, I don't want the budget ever to be entirely about property tax because there's so many other moving parts. And we talked about the enterprise funds and planning for the future and other things. So maybe just kind of, kind of keep that in mind. So where we left off, we're going to go to this next slide is...
This is in the new page?
Yes.
This is what we're...
These are the things that we verbally talked about. We went back, Levi and I went back and said, based on what we were hearing from the council, what are some things we could do? So we, we explored the proposed interest earnings for 24. And as I mentioned, interest earnings right now are running strong. So we think there's another $150,000 in revenue available. We think there might be some opportunities with asset sales as we sell equipment and vehicles. And then we talked about replacing the ambulance with a single purchase to a lease purchase starting in fiscal year 25, so the, the next year. And then delaying the police building improvements, delaying the arc equal purchase, the IT monitoring system. And then taking some of those one-time expenditures as Councilmember Adams talked about and funding them with, with fund balance. The fire capital, that was the station alerting system and life pack system. And then fleet, all general fund fleet with the exception of the police. We became a little nervous if we wanted to even reach into the police because I think that one is so important to keep on a, on a regular basis and build an operating basis for that. So with that, there's some adjustments. And again, this is a tentative budget. A lot, a lot can happen between now and June and July.
Right.
We haven't seen any assessed values from the county. So we're hoping that they come in and good growth is a whole lot more than we, we think it might be. And if that's the case, then immediately we'll, we'll take that off the property tax request. Dean, could you, sorry, swalking in a little bit late. Could you explain this? What are these potential?
Increased income basis.
Oh increased income.
Or savings.
These are adjustments we've made since we last talked.
Okay.
Either on the revenue side or on the expenditure side.
So some of the expenditures are like the 354,000, was that a cut?
Yeah.
All of these were reductions.
Cut or alternative funding source. It's either more.
As part of this discussion, as we, as we plan into next year, we did talk to Fruit Heights. I think that there's a really strong chance that we'll be supporting them fiscal year 24 with fire and paramedics. So that will help into next year's, next year budget. And then...
Will they have a new mayor by then?
I, I talked to John about it. So he just said he's committed for this year because Fruit Heights is getting a new city manager this year. So, so hopefully that'll come circle back to us. And then just in things that we're doing organically to try to help us as we plan future, we've had about 17,000 requests go in, we think, on the trade or dose stuff.
Oh, that's great.
So I mean, so things will hopefully change as we move forward, but it's not going to help us for this year. And so as we look at long-term planning, I just wanted you to think about those things too.
And there's some significant developments coming in this year. I mean, the ones happening down 400 West.
We're getting a Jack in the Box. So I keep talking about...
Those kind of things and 200 and...
Yeah, Jack in the Box.
So there's another restaurant that would be interested too.
Yeah.
We've talked about.
So really? Okay, good.
So the next few slides are just kind of summary slides. I don't know if we want to spend a lot of time on that. Maybe the only thing to point out is we've, you know, now we've bumped up interest earnings. That's where that is, Levi.
Yeah, yeah. It's part of that.
And use of fund balance. So that's kind of the tentative budget, total revenue that we're, we're looking at. Not a lot different from, from current year. And then maybe just go to the combined. So if you look at the combined expenditure, that includes personnel, operating and capital. You can see it again, just general fund department by department or responsibility center by responsibility center and, and a bottom, a bottom line of about $1.1 million gap.
Okay.
That we've talked about. And again, we're going to propose that we fill that gap with property tax proposal. And if you go to the next slide, you can see what, what that does. And here's, here's what I really want to point out is with that, here's what we're able to accomplish. We're able to accomplish provide the same level of service we're currently providing. We account for multi-year inflation costs that we've had over many years. We're striving to keep our compensation plan market competitive. We're accounting for the prior year revenue loss for Heights Fire Protection, which is a pretty big hit. And we're also accounting for the prior year public safety increases that happened off budget cycle a year ago. And when we had that discussion, there was even discussion at that point, the need to raise taxes to, to accomplish, accomplish that. So with that, an average value home of $600,000, projected increase of about $9, less than $10 per month. So that's kind of where we ended up. And that's, that's our recommendation going forward.
So the direction you need from us is just whether or not we're okay with this going forward as a tentative budget?
As a tentative budget. And again, just tentative, there's a lot of time after that.
Right. Okay.
We, we have on the council agenda on the 18th, adoption of a tentative budget. And so we just need to know what that, what that looks like going forward. Can I make one comment?
Absolutely. So I have, I, I've struggled from day one on the, on compensation. And it's my history. And Abby's words on Saturday, I stewed over. I mean, Abby, I love you like a daughter. But it bothers me when we say, and I'm not, I'm not discounting the great word because I've been around public servants my whole life. And that's my, in my career, and I still deal with my databases. And the work that goes over and above, I mean, we're paying young kids to go to, you know, Iraq, Afghanistan for years, 18 months at a time. And we sign up for it. You know, when, when I'm a public servant, whether it's City of Kaysville, federal government, I know exactly what I'm getting into. So it always bothers me when I hear they deserve the raise. Because what we, what we deserve as public servants, and I'll say the we, because I was one for 27 years, we deserve if we, whatever merit increase might be there. So if I work and I'm able to, I deserve the 3% because my boss thinks I went over and above, or I met my requirements to get that 3%. That's what I think people deserve. If we do a 6% or 8% raise, it's because, I guess it sounds like a gift. It's kindness. We, we feel, okay, because of inflation, because of whatever, here's what we're able to do, and the rest of the residents of Kaysville to keep the, what you say, the same level of service, we feel that this isn't too much to ask of them. But it bothers me when I say we deserve. Because what, what I sign up for is what I know I'm going to get. And so I just...
Okay. I think that's fair, for sure.
I know that. And I agree 100% with what you're saying, Perry, because when we give this job to somebody, we didn't force them to come here. They applied for the job, they knew what they were getting into, and they knew what was expected of them. And I've been around public myself my whole life, and people take their jobs very passionately seriously, and that is expected of them. And I, you know, I, it seems like, I don't know, I, I never wanted to be appreciated for what I was doing. I just did it because that's what my job was, you know? And that's what I feel like we've gotten to the point where I appreciate what they do, but you know, it's like my uncle putting me on the shovel. Appreciate you doing it, but that's what I paid you to do, and that's why you're here, you know? And I need to get the job done. But man, I am so struggling. I, I have talked to anybody that's in my circle, okay? I don't have a lot, but Morgan Payman giving nothing, okay? My son works for Walgreens. Walgreens is doing like a 1.5 to 2%. And that's a big corporation. My son works for EMI, Educators Mutual Insurance. They did merit and cost of living, and the most that they were getting was around 3. something or whatever. And I, I sit there and I get all this information from people who are out there that are getting, they're not getting anything. And then we're proposing a 8% cost of living raise, and you know, county did 3%. And you know, get our butts handed to us when...
The county did 3%?
3, yeah. Yeah.
How much for it?
Merit was up 3.5.
I think it'll be... The bigger issue for us is, I think when you talk about deserving, I think that's when, when merit comes in, in the paint, certainly. And I hope when department heads evaluate their employees on merit, that's based on deserving it. I think when we're talking about adjusting the compensation plan, that's more of an issue to be market competitive. So you're, you're paying what a similar position is paying in another, another city.
Yeah.
And that's what, that's what we're experiencing. And I think if you were to look at the Walgreens example, you know, they're probably looking at Walgreens versus Smith, and there's probably not a lot of difference between...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm talking to the private sector, period. That's what I'm trying to tell you is the people out there that we're asking to pay money into this are people who are not getting money.
But their baseline, their market is...
Is higher.
They're really not.
But I'm saying they're comparable.
They're just walking over there for 12 bucks an hour.
They're more comparable from industry to industry. Know what I'm saying?
I guess, but you know what, I, I tried to get as much, some information. I tried, I don't know if you want to, but you know, we, you take somebody who's, the whole point of this is the fact of the matter is when you work for Kaysville City, you take a job full-time, it's technically a career job. You're trying to make it a career job. But when you are making $120,000 a year and you get a $12,000, 10% cost of living increase, now it goes to $132,000. And the person that was making $60,000 only gets $6,000. And the whole point of it is, is we're trying to get it so people can live and work in here. And when you take the compensation of those people and you, you move that scale like that, people making $120,000, $100,000, they already have a house. People who are making $60,000, they don't have a house. They can't live. They're trying to get through this. And where we're really screwing up here, in my opinion, is we keep moving that upper level up, up, up. We need to be moving that bottom level up, up, up so that we can start getting people in Davis County so that they can start living here. I mean, you, you, you take a family of two adults and two kids, you know what, you can't afford a house here if you're making $60,000 a year. So rent has gone up in Davis County in 2000 to 2010, went up 100 bucks. From 2010 to 2020 in 10 years, it went up 300 bucks. From 2020 to 2022, it went up 300 bucks again in two years, what it did in 10. And so...
But I think that's, that's issue, Mike, is if you've got a Kaysville city employee making 60,000, when he can look at a neighboring city and that same person is making 72,000.
And that's actually the point I'm trying to make, Dean, is we need to start moving up that bottom and we need to level out that top.
But it's true for the employee making 120,000, when they can look at their neighboring city making 130,000.
I've heard the equivalent job. I mean, I'm hearing similar jobs.
And if they're, if, if their desire is to leave and go because they get more money, I don't ever want to stop somebody from doing that. Doug Smith was a perfect example, great employee. He was at his top point here. I did not, he said, hey, I got the opportunity to go to WC3. And I said, Dean, I said, Doug, I, I can't match what they're going to match. If you want to go, go. And he has grown in his position and he is making a lot more money. I would hate to have helped him.
But I would hate to, to lose a valuable employee that we've trained and equipped and, and have them go somewhere else.
It's expensive.
If we're, if we're...
I get it.
If we're invested in it.
And I'm trying to equalize this. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm okay with drop, you know, raising up the bottom, but the top, I mean, the people who work for Kaysville City, at the top of their wages and rate, they're getting paid pretty good. They're getting paid enough. Most positions here are above average. And we are wrong.
I disagree.
So I'm... Then give me the data. Then give me the data.
So I'm kind of in between both of you here. So it's like my job, I can make a lot more money if I work for Kaysville. No, if I work for the private sector, but...
And they make more money than the first person there.
Yeah. But I have a strong love for serving our country in a small part. And so that plays into it. And I think Kaysville, you know, we have a culture that is extremely positive here. And so I think that factors into it. What I'm wondering is what would that look like if we could, could you have a tiered system? Because I agree with you, like Nick, I know, his counterparts are getting paid more in other cities. And I would hate to lose Nick, valuable employee. So could we have a tiered system where, yeah, if you're kind of on the upper end, you do still get a cost of living increase, but it's a little bit less. And maybe it's a little more at the bottom to bring up folks. If, I don't want it...
And where do you make that cutoff? I mean, it could be done.
Well, I don't think it should be a cutoff just solely on salary. I think it would be kind of nice to see if that's a possibility, but then also look at certain positions. Like if there's a key position where every single attorney around us is making significantly more, then we take that position, kind of like we did with the police and out across the board.
And that's what our recommendation is. We've identified five or six positions that in addition to, to the market adjustment, they need to be adjusted on top of that.
Is that...
That's what I'd like to see.
Because I don't really see that. Oh, okay.
So I agree with you in...
It's part of the numbers, but I've never seen that. Do you have it to share with us or...
But I hope you, the point I'm trying to make is you can see what I'm saying, is the upper end, you just moved them up 12,000 in their deal, and you kept the lower end at 6,000.
I mean...
And so you just made that gap bigger.
But maybe with your six positions, but it's still, it's a market-driven thing.
Right.
I don't understand that. I guess they don't understand what you're saying.
Can you let them finish?
Come on, Amber. Wait for it.
I can't hear two of you once.
Dean, could we do two, like two approaches where we look at those six positions and then we also kind of look at a, a tiered approach, just to see hypothetically?
I'm going to say I don't like, I don't, I don't like that. I don't like splitting it up. At first I thought that like splitting it up, like initially that was, oh, that'd be a good idea. No, I don't like it. I think you have to give everybody the same cost of living increase, whatever you feel like cost of living is increased. Now, I think what Mike's saying...
I totally agree with you there.
Well, okay.
Now, I'll tell you why.
Well, but let me...
Let him finish.
So I think what I am hearing from Mike, or maybe my thoughts are, is, is that it's totally separate from cost of living. You're looking at all of the jobs and saying, here's some jobs that are too low. We need to just bring them, true them up. And you don't, and, and if your plan is to true those people up through cost of living, that's never going to work.
Yeah, you don't give the cost of living.
So you can't be cost of living.
We have three categories.
So if you gave somebody a $10,000 raise, but gave everybody the 4,000 or 4% cost of living because that's what cost of living was, but that still doesn't answer the question of what cost of living increase is across the board, if that makes sense. So I don't think...
I like what you're saying, John.
I think that's where I was headed.
Because after this week, I looked at this and thought, gee, some of these though, the jump is so huge. We've got some that are like 38% below market. Not very many, but 23, 22% below what we think the market rate is. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to give them, you know, the really disparate ones a raise and then slow up the other ones, you know, like slowly raise the others like 1% a year or something.
Go ahead, Dean. Sorry to present your...
Let me explain what this is. Okay, this is a ton of work by Levi.
Great work.
Yeah, thanks Levi.
We have gone through position by position and, and looked at what our, our range is and what a comparable range is with market and identified how far off market we are. And you...
Above average.
On an, yeah, the average, of the average. So if you can see, for example, on police with what we did last year, in my view, we're about where we want to be. You know, we're, we're above average. But there are several other positions where we're not even reaching average. And, and those that are way off market, and there, you can see there are probably five or six of them that are more than 20% off, off market, we're suggesting that in addition to what, in addition to the cost of living that you award, we, we add an additional amount there to push them to market, closer to market. Now, is it going to happen in one year? No. But it's something we want to strive to, to keep our compensation plan market competitive.
So how do you, looking at these numbers, like, how do I know that it's market competitive? Just as closest to zero?
It's what he has on the right. Black is, black is over.
Well, I understand the black, but at what point, like, do we want to be between plus 5% and minus 5% or...
I'd love to have all our positions 5% above average.
You know, and I guess what I would be asking here is in a comparison here, the comparisons, because if I'm a firefighter in Orangeville, Utah, or I'm a firefighter in Kaysville or Salt Lake City, when the alarm goes off, it's the exact same job. I don't care what it is. In Orangeville, I don't get paid anything. In Kaysville, I get paid pretty good, but I'm never going to get paid as much as working in Salt Lake City. Okay? So, but it's the exact same job.
Or Oregon, Utah.
Okay.
We have tried to look at equivalency. So if, if you've got a maintenance worker, they're pretty equivalent from city to city. If you've got a finance director, Kaysville versus Lehigh is probably not equivalent. So we, we...
This is, this is what my comparison would want to be. It would want to be a city of around 30,000 to 40,000 with a budget of 20 million. That's the equivalent city that I would want.
I think that's what you're saying, Mike.
What about geographical area?
I don't know. I don't know where you got all this information from. I have no idea.
We can go through the numbers.
Would geographical area play into that as well?
Yeah, I mean, it does. I mean, I, I think Syracuse is pretty comparable.
Yeah, Syracuse is very comparable.
I think, I think Farmington's probably clear, or pretty, Centerville's probably. Buffalo's not, they're twice as big as we are. They have a population of about 60 something thousand, I think, or whatever. And Leyton's 90,000, aren't they? Or whatever.
Yeah, but your maintenance worker in Leyton's, when you're at the same job as Kaysville.
Not if the revenue stream for them is different than the revenue stream is for Kaysville.
I would disagree. I would disagree because I think if they're doing the same job as maintenance worker, they're probably... Whether you're, whether you're 30,000 or 100,000, I'm still out doing that work. I'm still shoveling some...
I guess if the equivalent... But I guarantee you, the maintenance worker in Garden City is the same job as the maintenance worker here. They don't get paid nothing.
Okay, here, so what would really help you is if we gave you some guidance as far as saying, okay, in Kaysville, we'd like to be at the midpoint, and we'd like to be 1% above average, or we'd like to be at, at average.
I think you just need to decide as a city, where do you want to fall in line year to year?
So that we can work on getting towards that.
What's the standard you want to set comparatively?
Okay.
If you're okay being 10 to 15% below the average, then that's, then that's fine. Like, but what's the standard you want to set? It's not just this year, I think it's the next several years. Housing going to affect our city if we continue to be below average?
Well, I do, I do agree with, with Mike to a point that, okay, if we find out that all the jobs below 75,000 in Kaysville are way below average, then we should, we should do something to bring them up. But that shouldn't be a cost of living adjustment. That should just be a market adjustment.
And that's what I was talking about.
Yeah. So I get that, but I, at the same time, we shouldn't penalize people at the top because they've worked hard to get at the top. They should still get, they should still get the cost of living average. And it should be, or the, the amount should be the same through the city. But if we would give you enough direction, then you could say, okay, this is over time what we're going to do. We're going to bring down the lower tiers unless they're, they are competitive. If 50,000 in one city is 50,000 in another city, then even though it's 50,000, it's a competitive wage. So that's what we need to...
The only thing I'm trying to get, and I have a hard time getting it to you guys, is after a person's worked in Kaysville City for five or 10 years, every one of their jobs is just as important as the other person's is.
Right, for sure.
And when you start seeing, because, and I put the, this is, this is 120,000, 60,000, 10%, 132, 66, you have to figure 40% of your income goes towards housing. That means our people are trying to live on a $26,400, trying to get a house. That's where our gap is. That's where we're really missing. But yet, we just keep making this, they got 52,800.
And I, and I do agree with you, Mike, to a point, but at the same time, the person who's applying for a job for 50,000 doesn't have the skill set.
And I can honestly tell you...
That's applying for a job for 90,000.
Davis County, they have a lot of employees, and they understood that. And so they did actually go through and tier their employees all the way from the bottom up.
I think we should make a...
Davis County is what you're wanting to do. I think the mayor makes a good point is the jobs are valued on several factors, on knowledge, on skills, on abilities. And then they're, they're classified, the compensation plan is based on, on that.
So I think we need to look at a minimum, midpoint, maximum, and adjust those based on the market. But I think that would satisfy...
You can't do it in one year.
No, that's true.
I said we should do it over time.
Well, it's a target too, because if you, if you, if you go up to over 5%, then all the Farmington employees are going to say, oh my gosh, Kaysville guys, all this, Kaysville police guys are going to pay more. And then they go there and...
If there's no standard across the county, that's what happened last year. Farmington went up 14%.
And that's what's happening in restaurants with like, I mean, these guys are hiring kids for $15 an hour and...
It's 20 or something.
And it's going to just, eventually they're going to say, well, this doesn't work. Like, I don't know.
I think ultimately, we have to just figure out, like, okay, what is Kaysville? It's a small town, it's kind of more of a veteran community, we're trying to grow in the right way. And if our neighbors are going to rate, keep raising and raising, we have not, we can't do anything about that. But I do agree with pretty much everyone today as far as, yeah, I want our young, some But I do agree with pretty much everyone today, as far as, yeah, I want our young, some of our workers to maybe bump up, but I just want it to be more market conservative, but I don't think Kayesville needs to be at the highest.
This is just compared to average, so it's certainly not high.
So Levi's, we had positions that were a hundred and twenty percent of average, and I would say, we, we need to do what Mike was suggesting. But, but we don't. All, all positions are not even hitting average.
Well, I think we can take that into consideration as we start this process, because it's not gonna be a.
How does Syracuse do it? Because Syracuse has it based on.
Syracuse is, is pretty much real, it's really similar to what I did. It's pulling from the same source of data. The only difference is, we looked at, they look at the seven closest cities, so Kayesville, Farmington, Clearfield. They just look at those cities only, and then they, they take the average of the top three for each position. So they say the top three, what's the average, and that's where they move that.
I thought, and I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, because I could very much be wrong, your wife works for them, but my understanding was, they take that number, and then they say, we wanna be seventy-five percent.
That was what they previously did. So now they're.
The top three.
Now they take the top three, the average, and that's what, so every position gets adjusted different. So they really do it on a per-position basis.
I can't imagine what the industry does. You know, engineers get paid more than.
So that, I did the same thing, except our, and how this is, how this is different is, we're looking at more cities than just seven, and we're not looking at the top two or three or even five. We're literally taking the average of all those cities, look the middle, and then we're comparing our pay to that average.
Are the cities all northern Utah, Davis County? Which one? Cause I do think, like, yeah, you can, you can.
I can't imagine if we get to talk through what that cost of Davis County.
Hey Dean, so you, you said that included in the, um, in this number, the, the one point two. One point two. Included in the one point one five six here is, is the bump of five people, do you have those bump numbers? Or do they, I mean, I guess it's a public knowledge, it's okay to share in this meeting?
Sure, means everyone. And the, the six that I've identified are, you know, embarrassingly, Levi, the assistant finance director.
Okay.
The city attorney.
Can you give us numbers, or is that possible? I'm just like.
What are we looking at right now?
Those six positions that need to be adjusted.
Yeah, can we kind of walk through each one, so I can make a little star next to, here? Cause I kinda wanna look at those positions compared to this.
You have to share.
And did I start, is this my fault from my comment?
This is a great.
So, so what it is, is in green is the current range, and in blue is my recommendation for an adjusted range of, of the current compensation plan, the twenty-three compensation plan. And then anything council awards, uh, as market adjustment, would be on top of that.
So, uh, so five could be fifteen, eight could, eight be eighteen, got it, okay.
But, but that would just be a budget number, not that they would necessarily get that.
I get it.
That would be the top number.
And, and, yeah, I, no, I think this is the appropriate way to do it. I don't.
So you're saying, like, the first one, assistant, right, would be an eighteen percent increase with the ten?
And I'm saying, in, in green is the current range, and, and blue would be the recommended range, if we were to do something today.
So someone like, uh, Nick would get a possibility of a seventeen percent increase in pay?
No, I think we budgeted, in that situation, I think we budgeted a five percent, and then eight.
And two.
Eleven, yeah, and plus another four, yeah, so, yeah.
So, yeah.
Does that have five percent in addition to the cost of living?
Plus, in addition to the eleven percent, and they're already proposing, so it would be.
And his kind of, and his counterparts are making quite a bit more than that.
You know, and.
So do we bring down the cost of living? Can we, from eight percent to?
So, if we add, you're saying that we would at least guarantee thirteen, like, if we're talking about what we're, what we're budgeting for right now, do we say we're gonna budget for three, or are we budgeting for two merit?
Three.
Oh, we, we are gonna do the, okay, I, I don't know. No, this, for merit. Yeah, we had talked about, like, if we would budget for.
Two percent.
To, I don't, I, maybe I didn't.
These numbers are based on.
We programmed three.
We programmed three, okay. But I'm right, we did talk about that, right? Yeah, okay. So, so we took. So, so city manager, for city attorney, I would say.
Today, we, we increase that by five percent. It's probably not enough, five percent, but at least it's going in the right direction. And then whatever market adjustment the council awards would be on top of that.
On top of that.
And then he'd be eligible for merit.
So the calculations on these would, you're saying the calculation, eight percent calculation would come off the adjusted range, not off of the, where the current are? You'd wanna raise it prior to change, to, to remain the budget.
And, and, and in my view, those are the ones that, um, are needed the most. There, doesn't mean that others aren't.
Well, it's kinda like, I asked Chief, I asked Chief this when he was in, uh, Chief, I turned to him and I said, so where are the police now? Are they kind of where you think? And he's like, yeah, we're good. And I'm like, they better be good, like, we gave them a higher percentage percent, and then if you're getting another ten on top of that, they, they got, they've almost gotten a twenty-five percent increase in pay in two years, right?
I, I think they're good where they are right now, but as we roll into the next, next fiscal year.
Yeah.
I think the expectation would be is an increase.
An, an increase of the eight percent or, or plus two. So that puts Nick at a high range of one sixty.
One sixty.
Range.
Uh, yeah.
Doesn't mean he'd be at the highest end.
That's me saying two percent merit, right. So, yeah, you would have an option. They don't tap out though, right? At the, when we have a three, they can't tap out of that, can they, or?
What, what are you saying?
We can only, we can only compensate with the top of the range.
Oh, so I knew that.
Well, this doesn't show what Nick's top would be.
No, it does, not with our, it, it shows what his top would be just to gain, but it doesn't show what his top would be with the eleven percent.
Right. It, it would show the, the top if we were to adjust the current plan, and then anything else the council, uh, awards on top of that would, would adjust it.
So it would be like a hundred and sixty thousand? That's too much money for a city to pay. I mean, I'm sorry, it's just, it's, those are really, those wages are high wages for a city job.
We're talking about city attorney?
City attorney.
Yeah.
Well, if it's too much for a city to pay, then a city can't have a city attorney. That's what it sounds like to me.
Well, not necessarily.
No, that's not, yeah, that's not the point I'm trying to make. What I'm trying to make is just the bottom of the paper is city attorney.
What is the, um?
The feds aren't doing that much. My brother, they're only getting like four percent cost of living.
Dean, what's the appetite to make adjustment for these positions this year, but not add on the COLA? For this year, since.
Oh, I, I think if I were to ask that, they'd say, don't adjust, and.
Just add on the COLA instead?
Because the COLA's more. Yeah, I mean, the COLA's more. I mean, if you, if you do eight percent, you know, for two of them, it's the same.
But I think they're off-market.
They, well, yeah, and now that they'll, I guess.
Yeah, and, and I understand, I totally get what you're saying, and I, and I think that's one of the things we have to do. We have to look and say, what, what is market? I mean, what are we gonna do? Cause, you know, you don't wanna lose any of these folks. And then it's, but then the question is, is it all additive? You know, do you make the adjustment, and then?
Yeah, you have to decide what you can afford.
Right, exactly.
I mean, we're, for each percentage is a hundred and twenty thousand, about, right?
Again, we're, we're bringing you, and I don't want this to be shoot the messenger game, and I, and I don't, I don't take it that way. I really don't. We're, we're just, we're just bringing you the best information we can, of what we, what we think needs to be done. It's your call. It's your call.
I, I totally get what you're saying, just, and I'm really struggling, when I know that all my family members or people I know are not even coming close to these types of raises.
And we know what other cities are doing.
So really, what we're trying to accomplish in this meeting, man, is just to figure out what everyone's comfortable with, right? So that we can make a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, you, you don't have to make a decision today.
Right, right, we don't have to, but we should have the discussion about.
We'll, we'll look forward to the tentative budget as proposed, and then you can still.
I mean, realistically, in the last couple of years, we've done a salary adjustment and have raised everybody. We did that in two thousand and nineteen, I believe, or twenty, Tammy, you should remember that.
I do remember that.
Uh, we have taken, um, sick leave and made, and turned it into personal leave, so now they get paid out for that. We've gone from twelve, uh, paid holidays to fourteen paid holidays a year. Um, and, uh, we now allow family leave. All this comes at a cost.
Absolutely.
You know, and, uh, it's just, but I guess, I guess it's never enough, never enough.
Can I add to that? And I don't wanna get too, like you, but I know there, it seems like there are quite a few employees that drive city cars to and from work, to their home, and also fill up with gas. And I started talking about it a lot more last year. Uh, like, I, I heard that there were several employees that were really upset when I brought it up. I, I don't quite know how to maneuver that, because I think that there are many employees that should have a vehicle and gas, or it's critical to the job, but I think, yeah, there's other perks too, that are kind of below the radar a little bit, it seems.
That's, that's a listing.
Maybe I'm not looking at it right.
That's a listing of, uh, people who drive home with a vehicle.
And you, and fill up with city gas.
Yeah.
Okay. This is actually really helpful. I'm not necessarily advocating to, to.
And then again, we have.
If you're beginning to have, you can just, yeah. Um, but can I bring up one point real quick? I need to go home and get my daughter, come back with her. Um, I'm just not sure how long you're meeting. But I woke up.
I mean, Coach Levi has, um, T-ball at five.
Yeah, I'll make this really fast. I woke up very early this morning, and suddenly I was nervous about the increase to the city council. And I do.
Thank you. We want zero.
Yeah, I do think that.
I agree. We don't.
We all should be compensated, um, for the work we put in, and I am for increasing that. But with the tax increase and all the different positions that are below market value, I think we should not increase that this year, um, and come around next year.
Yeah, I agree with that. It's just not the right time.
Yeah, I just don't think it's the right time. Um, I just wanted to say that.
That's a good suggestion. I think that.
I guess moving forward real quick, for me too, I just wanna know how, like, would this be better to address next year? Since we do have the eight percent, that's an auction. I mean, how dire of a situation is it?
Ah, you guys are talking about such small numbers. I mean, like, the city council thing that is twelve grand.
No, that's, that's, that's a perception.
I get it, I get it. This is thirty grand, this is thirty grand. I'm just, that's the numbers. This is, it's not making a dent in your one point one. I mean, I get it, like, we are, we're accountable to make sure that these things happen, but also at the same time, I'm not supervising any of these people. Dean's taking care of Levi every single day, and he knows, I don't wanna.
Dean should be getting the raise.
No, he doesn't wanna lose Levi, and so he's like, I wanna give him a raise, and he needs to be paid for. And, you know, city attorney and all these guys, like, I, I just, I don't see why we even have a, I mean, we, I get we have an opinion and we have, like, a responsibility, but maybe, like, if you feel like our directors, and we're looking at, like, firing some director because you think that they're, that they're taking advantage of, of us, and like, we're gonna pay all these guys more money because we wanna just, we wanna make our employees rich, but we don't.
We don't.
We are here, I want, almost.
I wanna close the housing gap. That's what I want. But you're not gonna achieve that as a speaker. I don't wanna achieve it, but I wanna help those guys that can't afford a home. A hundred percent, and that's why I say, we gotta give those guys raises.
A lot of people like feeling that, I mean, Kayesville's a great place to work, and I've loved working here, and I'm at the point in my career, I don't have a house payment, I don't have a car payment.
You're right.
I'm not ba, paying for piano lessons, I'm not paying for dance lessons, but ninety percent plus of our employees still are.
Right.
And isn't it our job to make it better for our employees?
I agree, Dean. That's what I'm trying to tell you, and that's the lower tier that I'm trying to take care of. In a time when we are in a recession, I still want to try to take care of the lower tier of our employees, so they can afford this more.
But Mike, look at this numbers. Everybody's lower tier.
I guess.
Yeah.
I mean, ninety percent of them are lower tier.
You guys, I get the opportunity to be here a lot. And when I first started working, cause I've never been in a government environment before, I've always been private businesses, right? So I kinda thought, oh, it'll be interesting to see who sits around and does nothing all day. Cause you hear that about government employees. And, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, federal employees are totally different. Anyway, but down at this level, people bust their butts. I'm not kidding, I'm not just trying to, to win points with them. They work so hard, and they do multiple things, and, you know, you can call them at night, and I can call, I text Dean at ten o'clock at night. He's doing an interim job right now, you know? He's just filling in for us. And so, and everybody's like that. Josh is the same way. I, I bug him all weekend long. Melinda, I talk to her on the weekends. And they're, they're busting their butts trying to do it. And so, honestly, I understand, it seems like, gosh, we're, we're increasing so much, but it's not just Kayesville City, Mike, it's the whole world. The whole world has changed in the last five years in a drastic way. And it doesn't mean that Kayesville has to fill in the gap for the whole world, I get that. This is a city job. But at the same time, they are working so hard. I really thought that I'd get here and think, okay, well, we have, we don't need that person, we don't need that person. Cause in a small business, you do that. And you say, well, we're gonna eliminate some positions because we can all do more. But honestly, here, people are working so hard, and they're doing so much more than they were even hired to do. And so, I know it seems like a lot of money to say eight percent. I don't think it really ends up being that much money when you look at individual positions. Now, overall, yeah, it's, it's a jump and stuff, but, but at the same time, people are saying, look, we can do without some nicer things, we can do without, you know, stuff that's extra. So I think that we should, I don't think that this is a real big decision to make, but that's just my opinion. I think as a city, if we would go out and talk to, generally speaking, residents in the community, say, look, this is what you get for living in Kayesville. You're paying, on average, what is it, like?
Five hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, yeah. Five hundred bucks a year to live here in a city that's well-managed.
It's gonna be a little bit more than a twenty percent pay.
It, it is, Mike, but at the same time, that's almost ten bucks a month.
I get it, but it's also the dog, is, we're also gonna get animal control, it's gonna hit us.
But that's not something we can control. We can't control that. We can control our part of it.
The end of the day.
It's a big, it's a big.
Comes out of the same wallet.
No, I know, I get it, but at the same time, I think it's our responsibility as a city council to protect the assets, which I really honestly believe are employees. You guys, the relationships that we have within the city, the goodwill that people have, because they're out there every day, it counts. It counts. We can reach out and talk to people. And people know that they can reach out to our public works, to our whatever department. People come in all day long. I didn't think anyone came into city hall either. I kinda thought, why do we have this building now? They do. There are a ton of people that come in. They have questions, they have complaints, they have concerns, so.
So, can I make?
Honestly, yes, John, you may also comment.
Okay. I guess, I, I almost wonder if this is a hybrid of, of the plan, and, and again, I, maybe it's, I mean, me trying to think a little outside of the box, but say, say we gave a, I, I believe, nobody on the speaker jumped out at me. Say we gave a cost of living of six percent, five and a half percent. And we took that two hundred and seven, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars and spread it out amongst these people who are ten, fifteen percent below, um, average, and brought them up to where they're at zero or at five.
Or whatever it might do.
Yeah, so we take that money, so we're still using the same amount of money. That was my only thought, was you, you are, it's kind of a dog chasing its tail when you give everybody eight, because some of these guys that are sixteen percent above, or eighteen percent, I mean, I hate it that they're, a lot of them, the police, and then in the parks and rec, they're, they're already pretty, pretty high, and you do everybody eight, and it doesn't really help. Those people who are twenty under, or eighteen under, ten under, how realistic is that to do it, that? So making this list much longer, but then giving everybody, uh.
That's exactly what Kay, what Syracuse does.
Five and a half percent.
I like where you're going to be approaching to. I like where you're thinking on that, because it, this isn't personal to any position. It's just, as a city, we have to. I like where you're thinking on that, because it, this isn't personal to any position. It's just as a city, we have to.
We wanna be in that range.
But that's a lot of work for you guys.
They're willing to do the work.
Seems to me like that is like, cause then people who are in this lower bracket, they're actually the ones who are getting help. They're like, oh my gosh, I was making sixty grand a year. Now I'm making eighty grand a year, seventy-five grand a year.
I hope not. That much for jumping over here.
You know? I wouldn't care. I mean, you think like it'd be, if that's life change.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, but, but if it makes, if it's statistically correct, then it's okay, you know, but.
Bring them up.
John, real quick, I gotta run, but to that point, like how does that affect the cur- the rate increase?
He's keeping you saying, you keep it within the same.
No, I'm talking about the tax.
That, that's my point. No.
The tax increase.
Keep the same amount.
The tax increase stays the same. Like it's okay, these guys have done a fantastic job of getting us to where it's like only, we're only looking at like ten dollars per home. I think that's like a fair and something that I can push and take to the neighbors. But, but I think that the smarter way to do it is to back that cost of living back to like five and a half or whatever it is. And then use that money, take that same amount of money and start plugging it into these people that are low, below and bring them all up.
You're talking about three hundred thousand dollars.
See, yeah, you got like three and a strand that you can play with and bring them up. And you know, this is thirty. And then, which I totally fine with, like let's do it. Let's bring all these people up. And then give everybody five and a half, which is like one time.
The only thing I don't like about your plan is I don't like somebody making a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand, getting that ten or fifteen percent increase, cause it's too much.
My, my, but the problem is like, I mean, you can't, you can't look, I mean, I know this is hard, but like, I I'm way above that, what I make. I'm struggling still, right? Like I can't. And I get it. I have a boat, I have four cars, I have all this stuff, but I'm living.
A little small spiral.
Well, I'm sorry, but, but I'm just saying, like, I, I'm speaking for the people who can't speak for themselves. I don't care if you're making a hundred and forty.
Yeah, it's still money.
The cost of living is increasing. I wish I was getting more. I wish my company was doing a similar thing. And so I think, and, and I think that, and the problem is, I get what you're saying, but across the board, all the other cities are doing it.
I think that if we did that, we'd really wanna go to the department heads and say, okay, you've got this three percent for merit. You need to be more um
Judicial.
Open and judicial in giving that merit to more people.
Yeah. Oh, I was gonna say, if they don't deserve it, don't.
Well, yeah, they, they don't right now. Only like one or two people in their department even get merit right now.
Really?
At all, yeah, they're very, they're very strict.
I really thought it was like closer to ninety percent.
No, not at all. People aren't getting, that's what I've been told. They don't really give out merit.
That's where we just need to trust, yeah, the department heads. They, they realize that that's something that they can hold over too.
Yeah.
That's like the only thing that, that might be the only thing.
We would love this list to be more comprehensive than it is. I mean, when we look at that and say, where do you cut it off? I mean, when someone, someone that's sixteen percent below, we haven't even addressed.
Yeah.
So I think what you're suggesting is, is a good idea. That's why we, we wanted to do this in addition to what we thought we needed to do at eight percent. But if the council is saying, you know, split it up, then certainly we can look at that and bring it back to you.
I don't know. What do you guys think? Cause I'm, I don't wanna like it, I don't wanna get shot by the, you know, the people that I just took away eight percent from them.
No, I, I, I'll be honest with you, John, I like the five and a half percent and I like taking that three hundred thousand dollars, but I wanna give it to the people who are less fortunate, who, who are trying to buy groceries.
Yeah.
And steal um buy a house. And, and if you're making a hundred and twenty thousand and you don't have a house yet and, and that, then, then you, you're doing something wrong in my mind, but um, and, but people are making sixty thousand and ha- their groceries went up the exact same amount and all that as the people and their gas and everything that are making a hundred and twenty thousand and still trying to live with that forty percent of their wages being put into housing. I don't agree that that upper tier should be given at this time in this economy. When the interest rates and everything are going so high, so I like your.
But they should for sure get the, they for sure get the five.
Absolutely. Get the five and a half. Absolutely. Give them the five and a half.
I think you're, I think that solves it because I'm looking, I mean, there are a few.
But then take the, take the three hundred thousand and do it for people who are ninety thousand below.
I take exception to that. And I, I, I think you, you've gotta be, I mean, you're concerned about those that are making less, but you've gotta be more competitive too.
Yeah, you, yeah, you gotta, well, let's just look at the numbers. Let's look at the numbers first.
Someone that's, someone that's gone to school and got that training.
And they have a lot of years and they've worked a long time. They've got a lot of industry knowledge. They've been here a long time or not necessarily here, but just they've got the historical, you know.
Then don't, don't they have more liability also? Like if something that happened, they're the ones who are in trouble in general, less more than, than.
But, but I understand what you're trying to say. I, I understand that.
I am. I'm trying to close that gap.
So, so let me ask, let me ask you a question. Do you try to, as you try to close the gap? Well, and this is a what if, so, and I was thinking six percent, John, five and a half.
Six is fine.
I was thinking, you know, five and a half, I don't really, doesn't matter. But I would almost add another percentage, one percentage point or to um help close the gap.
With the other positions.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think that's what.
But no, no, you said, John says, John says five and a half, take two and a half percent so to do that. I'm thinking, what if you raise it a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or something, you know, if you're looking at the numbers there to add that on the, on, on make, on make it more.
Well, let's, let's not spend it unless we need to, but like you said, I mean, he may pull.
I would have a look at it to see, but I would, because I am much more uh mediable to, to closing the gap and, and making it so your workers are, I don't want them to jump ship, you know, and, and to do that, instead, instead of just cost of living. I, you know, does that? And that's, and that's, that's my own personal problem, but I, I don't have a, I like John's idea and I would be willing, I mean, I don't know how other people might feel on that, but to even look at what that, what that would do for us. Does that?
If he came back, I mean, off, off the top of your head, what you're saying.
You know, you've looked at these numbers a lot. Sometimes you probably have an idea already.
Well, I think the, the overall tax number would, would go up.
Sure would. Go, if it go up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I think it would really help the city be more competitive just on a per position basis across the board.
Okay.
I mean, just, just, if you, just be susceptible to, to more than that.
Well, I, I would like to see it. I would just like to see it, because if you could bring up some of these guys to, if you could bring up so that there's nobody under, say nobody under five percent negative here. What, what are those numbers? What are those numbers? Cause maybe it ends up being three hundred and twenty grand and then we're like, oh, we don't need to add.
But then don't you think it's right then to take the ones that are twenty-five percent over and not give them any?
Who's twenty-five percent over?
Well, if they are, I'm just asking. Are there some police or something that were twenty-five percent over?
Oh, not, not, well, no, we're not getting, we're not giving cola, but we're not giving, no, we're, yeah, we're not giving them anything.
Well, but the cola.
We're only bringing up the people.
You, they would, they would still get the five.
They would get the cola. Yeah, you can't keep that.
Or whatever, whatever we decide.
But every time you do that on the upper thing, it'll, it'll just widen the gap.
It'll catch up. All the other cities will, it'll catch up.
Let, let us go back based on that. I, I think, just I think six percent, I mean, it's semantic here, five and a half or six percent.
Six.
Knowing what other cities are doing right now, I think six percent and then take that other two percent and, and target certain positions.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? And I would say, look at it, look at one more percent.
So you're saying three percent to target, so increases by one percent.
So just see what the numbers.
Just see what, you see what that is. And then, then if nothing else, then we can do, what does that one more, one percent, one more percent do for you?
I do like that. That's more on long-term planning, which is good. We, we're gonna have the same conversation next year, so let's try to get ahead of it. That's good.
I think that's great and it helps in terms of where do you wanna be at year to year to year going forward? How do you wanna compare?
Right.
And that, this is kind of a good bench. Like this, now that this is set up, it's easy to do it every year.
How?
Download.
How hard would it be for you to get the same equal jobs of thirty thousand to forty thousand with a budget of twenty million? So we have a good comparison.
Uh, let's, let's just, let's go there, Levi. Let's look at one of the comparisons. Let's look at.
Syracuse. There you go, Syracuse.
I don't have just Syracuse as.
Look at, look at my position. Let's just look at my position.
I can pull up, let's, I can give you the.
Okay.
Off the line.
Let's go. And see what we compare it against.
I didn't mean to, it wasn't sounding, I just, I hope that didn't sound, coming from Eric, I feel like, I don't, I.
We should be like a girl I saw driving up here. This is the smartest thing I've ever seen. Girl driving car says, saving for my senior trip, Venmo me at such and such. You're smart.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, okay, here, here, let's, there's the city manager.
Okay.
So he's not here, so we can talk about it.
But we know he's listening.
So just to help you kinda understand this, this, this date here is the date that they last updated the numbers.
Okay.
And so you can see if they haven't updated it for a couple of years. So all the ones that are in red are more than, you know, a couple of years old. And so I just put on a generic four percent increase, cause I'm sure they've done increases. They just, they just didn't update the numbers.
That's true.
That's what the red means. But you can see, these are, you know, some of the cities we've compared against. Um, and Dean and I have gone through each one of these and if there's a clear outlier, then we've taken it out.
Higher or lower?
Yeah.
Too higher.
Yeah.
Your standard deviation cuts off.
Yeah, and so, and then this is what our current pay scale is for city manager, and then this is the percentage off. So this, here's the average. So the average of all those is, tops out at one eighty-three and we're, so that's seven percent below.
Okay.
That's.
Laying is pretty big, but, but anyway.
How big?
It's still a similar job.
But how big, how big is plus or growth?
Well, you have to assume too that, I mean, unless their city manager is doing more work, none of them are wanting to just throw money away. So they're probably not paying them significantly more, right?
This is just ranges.
Ranges.
Doesn't show what they actually make.
What they're actually making, yeah.
Right.
And those guys with the higher salaries probably aren't quitting anytime soon to make an open position.
Right.
You can't. I mean, it's not fair. You can't. It's a city like Draper. It's totally different than Kville.
But, but it's the same job. I mean, it's a bigger job. There's more people.
It's the same job in every city, in every city. It's the same job.
But they'll have, but they'll have more people.
Yeah.
You know, they'll, they'll have the directors and directors of those.
But they'll also have, they'll have more help too. They'll have an assistant. They'll have.
You can do a fifty million dollar budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to do things. Yeah.
Sure.
It's kinda like comparing this with unified fire. I mean, there's probably eight cities in the outline county. There's probably, uh, their budgets nearly built.
Probably.
Yeah.
They get a million.
Again, we just, we looked at the job description, what they do and, and uh.
Yeah, for sure.
Try to get.
And again, we just, that's why we took the average.
No, yeah, yeah, and Levi, that, that's perfect stuff. I mean, that's.
For example, we, we took out, I think, uh.
We took out Lehi, I think.
I don't see probably.
And we took out Lehi because we, maybe it was comparable.
Is there any way to add a column that has their annual budget? With that, I don't know if that data is in there to pull.
But Mike, to your point, that makes a huge difference, of course. We have to say what can you afford with what you have.
I've been trying to make, or do a taxpayer's by.
But that's a decision you need to make, whether they have a two hundred million dollar budget or not. You make the decision on what you can afford. We, we're, we're just making a decision on what is marketing.
And, and I just hate that. I don't, I don't wanna feel like the taxpayers are this open-ended revenue stream.
Yeah, for sure.
I don't wanna feel like that.
No, of course not.
Because we all said that we'd be physically responsible and do everything we could to not raise taxes. Which will bring me to my next one.
Save the power thing for another meeting.
Why? Because it's part of the budget. It has to be part, yes.
Oh, it does?
It's be part of the ten of the budget.
Oh, okay, my bad then. I thought that was a separate thing.
No, it needs to be part of ten of the budget. So here I have.
Yes.
Our Caswell City audit, which was for twenty twenty-two. And it said we have nine point two million dollars of unrestricted funds in the power company. Okay, if there's not still nine point two million dollars there, then probably somebody's in trouble because we have not as a council put that money anywhere else other than the unrestricted. So we, we know there's monies that need to go out, so I would suggest, it's just my suggestion, because hopefully that money's still there, cause if it's not there, somebody's probably in a lot of trouble.
It's down because of the current year. We're at two million, so it's at seven point two.
Why, why would it be down? And, and explain to me why it would be down, because this was unrestricted funds.
It's the, the timing. That was as of June thirty, twenty twenty-two. Over the last ten months, we've lost another two million.
But.
Because of rates.
Just because, mostly because of the power rates.
How much? Okay, then that, so that'll be Levi, because we have two and a half million dollars with UAMs to cover rates.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, the current.
So the nine point two million dollars, we have never transferred any of that money to another account. We have never put it in another line item. It should still be nine point two million in.
No, no, because you gotta take into account your operations during this year. That is June thirty of two thousand twenty-two. What about July, August, September, October?
But, but this was unrestricted funds, so how, how, did you not, you, all those others should have been budgeted out of the power company.
Budgeted about your two million dollars in the hole in your budget.
So.
Because, because the, because the rates are so high.
Got it? But uh, over, over a twelve month period, we're not.
Yeah, we are.
That's over the twelve month period, we are two million.
Over a nine month period, we are.
Okay, nine month period. Okay, so we have seven million. Okay, all right, seven million.
And then the twenty-four budgets says another two million dollars is going out.
So let's give some money back to the rate payers. I, I'm, all I'm saying is, let's help make this up. Let's help make up this, if we're one point two, figure out what that costs and let's give it back. If it needs just credit fifteen dollars into their account.
I just have to agree, disagree, Mike, because the money is not there to give money back to rate payers. We just did a, a rate adjustment because of.
I, I, Dean, I guess I don't understand how it's not there, because as a council, we have not given any authorization to move that money into any account anywhere.
We haven't moved it anywhere. So you think the power fund, there's still two million in the, in the hole, in the power fund.
But it's unrestricted money that needs cash.
It's unrestricted, so you use it as part of your budget. It's not restricted for impact fees or anything else. It's unrestricted, so it's part of your operating cost.
Our operations have been more of that, but revenue coming in the last ten months.
Yeah.
It was really, it was really three months or four months that we were.
The bulk of it was, yeah.
Like November, December, January, first of.
You know, last time I looked, when you guys showed it to me, we were still in black. We weren't red. We were in the black. I'm not sure what, because we, we brought in like one point two million.
Levi just finished this today.
Okay.
This is April thirty of two thousand twenty-three, net revenue over expenditures, seven, one point seven deficit.
So it went up, it was a little better. In March, it was two million. Now at the end of April, it's one point seven.
It's still.
What do you, what do you think by the end of the year? It might, I don't know.
Maybe one point five depends.
We'll see. Cause we're usually bringing about two million in July and spend a million and, but December, November.
Yeah, Mike, those, those days are gone, you know?
Well, and it sucks because.
It sucks because twenty years ago, we had all the coal we could burn and no one cared about dumping coal into the air. And power was cheap and we could sell, we could buy things, but those days are long gone.
So frustrating, because we are a natural gas producing state and we are taking our natural gas and shipping it to the, to the UK. And because it was two dollars here, then they can get it for ten dollars in the UK. They're shipping it to the UK and we're paying UK prices.
And that's a mess.
And it's a whole power thing's a mess. But I just hate.
Wherever you find it.
If, if, if at the end of the year.
No increase.
No kidding.
If at the end of the year, we're raising people's taxes and we have seven million dollars in the bank.
She says twenty-three.
Isn't that seven million? Isn't that? It was at Susan Lee, you said that's the, or doesn't we all want us to have a certain number?
Yeah, same.
And it was seven million.
That's what she, that's what she reported, she said.
I thought that's what we've always been going by.
So for example, like we need to add your seven. Water, an extra two point seven million, spill and drain.
Well, that's more. I guess, because you're gonna have to do the projects and you're gonna be buying more.
The red mystery.
Yeah.
Something, does that make sense?
Well, the shade is on those revenues, you could use some of that power fund for some of those water projects.
Yeah, that is a bummer.
Uh, you know, that's where, you know, if I was.
Trying to, so we're gonna do some, I'm trying to use some of that, I need to pay taxes.
So my recommendation would be that, uh, Dean and Levi come back with a similar paper like this. That uses their thing here to bring all, so that all of these red numbers say.
We shrink that gap.
Say five percent.
What's the target? How do you wanna start?
But with the exception, here's what I would say. I just wanna know the numbers, but what I would say is that you bring all of these to five percent. Five, just right at five.
Positive.
I'm five, five below this. So, so for example, you know, uh, say. Yeah, say you've got, uh, let's take, uh, well, she's here, so we can, she's her city recorder. You got the city recorder, it says, uh, for max, it is nine percent lower than what all the other. I, I would want four percent added to that, so that it was five.
So it's no less than five.
Which is not less percent, five percent average, but I, I've been, Levi, forgive me on this, because I know you're just like. Seeing the numbers flash your head. Where you're like twenty three, I would say, we don't more, we don't do more than ten.
Per in, per person.
Per person. So that would take you to, that would take you to thirteen, and like some of these other.
Above or below?
Below.
Below.
Below, okay.
Below ten percent. But does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, and then, and then we look at it, and the next year.
Can, can we please concentrate though on the people who are making below ninety thousand?
Yeah, and it will do that. Like, you, I've looked at the numbers.
Okay.
But, but there's people that.
And I like your idea. Keep it on the five percent below. Don't give them more than ten. Keep them five percent below. And and really concentrate on the people down there that are having a hard time buying a low.
Well, I think it's, uh, it automatically does it, because it's the majority of people.
Majority of the, you know, but if you're doing at the, you know, community development director, you know, thirteen, at the highest thirteen below.
I think, still think you need to look at, what would it take to get it to five, just five below? And and what is that number in there?
Well, five below is eight percent, and that's what I'm saying, as long as it's under ten. No, they'll bring him to five. But don't raise them anymore than ten.
We got there.
So there's the mid.
But the mid range.
Max.
Off the mid range.
Don't, I thought we go off the, I thought we budget for the max.
We have to budget for the max.
We budget for the max, so I think we go off the max. And it changes all of them the same way.
We have a, we have a thirty five percent spread on all positions. The minimum is thirty five percent less than the max.
Oh, it's thirty five, okay.
So that's, just so you kinda know, that's.
That's good.
And so.
At least go off the mid range, because we have more people in the mid range than we do in the max.
It'll same effect.
Say it's the same effect? Yes, it'll, it'll, the numbers will taper, so, so.
No, the whole range will move.
Let's not move the range at all. Let's just move people.
Well, that's. We have to move the range.
I wish we could not add inflation to the, to the range. I really do. I really wish we could give people their colas. But not increase the range. That's what they were asking, is that we raise it just to eight percent cola. I actually think this is more fair.
No, I know, what I'm saying is, so that we don't keep, by, you, you, you give everybody the eight.
I get.
You get, you get what I'm saying? Let's leave the range where it's at, instead of moving it again and creating this problem more again and again and again, every year.
It would be basically, you're talking about bonuses. You're talking about giving someone, you give everybody a five thousand dollar bonus.
There are other cities that have raised their people, gave them their cola, but they left.
But pretty soon, everybody's at the max.
Yeah, and that doesn't solve the problem.
Hey, Mike, Mike, what you said is what brought, Mike, picked me to this, because that's exactly what I thought about. These people who are making sixty grand, they need to be at eighty or they need to be at seventy five, but we can't get them there with eight percent. We're only getting them to sixty three or sixty two. So I think what you said was you just follow.
And that's what I'm, you know, Josh is great.
Just different way.
Kate was great. All those guys are great, but they can't get somebody down in those trenches, behind those guns, and behind those fire hoses. They're not any good.
Do you, do you think most of the department heads, I mean, most of the folks, I know that police won't be as super excited about it, because they're, they're. And yet, but I think most part of people are gonna realize, like, this is for the better of.
I think, I think it's a good approach. Are you? Going in concerns me is, uh. Market competitiveness, I mean, you've got your high end positions that are fighting market as well as your low end positions.
Yeah.
I mean, a public works director is. He's going to compare his, his wage, not against, his guy's wages can compare it against other cities.
Right. So as long as we bring them up to that amount, though, are you saying because the other guys are gonna be at eight percent cola?
I, I think we just have to run the numbers.
Okay, alright.
I, I think we, we would go forward is, we would, we would look at a market adjustment of six percent. And then we would take that other, whatever it is to, to target certain positions to, to bring them closer within.
Closer to five. With the max at ten increase.
So when do we wanna meet?
Well, now that, ten of the budget is next Thursday.
I know, so, so.
I mean, we, we can still adopt the budget. You're not adopting a compensation plan until June.
Really, what you're saying is that you're gonna change that end number, it's more just allocated.
It might increase it by one percent.
Are you okay with adding, what, what do you want?
I'm okay. I, I just.
You're okay looking at it?
I'm okay with looking at, I mean, my whole thing is, I wanna see the numbers. I mean, we, I think I said, we might be surprised, because we've got some pretty high dollar. Guys in here already, and it's thirty grand. I mean, and granted, there's gonna be a lot of these, like, you know.
I, I just like, I'd be interested in the numbers.
But it may, it may only come up to two hundred and.
Yeah, yeah, I have no idea.
So I think what Perry is saying basically is, let's see what it takes to get us there, and if it means we have to add another hundred and twenty grand to the.
We'll, we'll give it a couple of different scenarios.
Okay.
And we just should see that at city council.
Um, no, I don't wanna see it there.
Let, let's move forward with, uh, adoption of the tentative budget. We're gonna have an after that, um, prior to, to June, and we'll have another budget discussion.
So the tentative budget would be the eight percent and the eleven?
No, it would be six percent.
Well, I'm saying which ten, that, that number though.
It would be, it would just be the number.
That's all, that's the number.
Just be the one point one increase.
Right.
Yeah, cause he, cause nowhere in the budget does it say eight percent.
That, that will take place when you adopt the compensation plan.
So it would just be that overall number, one point.
Make this balance.
One point one five six.
We will, but you'll put.
Okay.
One point one five, yeah, right there. One point one five six.
Okay.
But if you say, Dean, I couldn't hear you.
So, this number here, to make it zero, is we will go to the revenue side.
We'll increase this tax.
And so then you will say, we are going to have truth in taxation, raise your property taxes next Thursday. Good. I can't, I hope we all get our butts handed to us.
I, I really don't think we will.
Well, and that will tell me a lot.
I mean, we will from a couple of people for sure, but overall, I don't think we will, but we'll see.
I, I wanna see. I, I really wanna hear. I, I was hoping that we'd be able to get what the compensation was going to be out there. Cause I wanna hear what people have to say. I really do. I've been trying to ask anybody and everybody.
I've been asking too, in other cities and as mayors, we've had a lot of conversations about holding rates, and so we're gonna have more conversations about that, because we're killing each other.
Well, and I think, I'm getting a lot of like, I get a lot of people saying, wait, you're gonna give eight or ten percent? And I'm not getting money or whatever. It's a different conversation when you say, we're raising people's salaries and giving them six.
To make it competitive.
Because it, it's competitive, and like, it's, a lot of the times, it ends up being the same thing.
And I don't, I don't want the whole conversation to be salaries. I mean, we identify those, those five things. I mean.
That's huge.
Inflationary costs, the same level of service, and all those things, it's, it's so much more than than paying.
That's true.
It's that.
That's true.
And I don't get me, I'm just trying to close the gap.
We get them. We get them.
You know, I'm just trying to close that gap between the poor guy sitting in the trench with his shovel, freezing his butt off at midnight, because of water, he's spraying all over him, and. You know, and a lot of other.
This'll work. I think this'll work. And Dean's Houdini too, cause he'll like say, hey, surprise, the rates were higher.
Bottom line is, you make sixty thousand dollars a year, you can't afford a house. I'm sad. I hate it, especially when rent, rent's about eighteen hundred dollars a month.
Well. It, it was, with, with rent being crazy like that, but if I'm making sixty thousand a year, I don't, I don't, I don't find it be an owner of a house. And I don't think that's okay.
But I should build a rent one.
I should be able to rent one.
And I, and the whole time I was growing up as a kid, I never, ever, ever thought I could not get a house in Davis County. Until the last couple of years, when we sold more houses to people out of state than we did our kids in state.
No, that, and that's. My, my, my son and daughter-in-law, they're, they're living in Cash, Cash Valley, and they're paying fourteen fifty a month for one little one bedroom.
My daughter pays eighteen hundred dollars a month for a five hundred square foot, one bedroom apartment.
Yeah, my daughter's doing the same thing in Keysville, a basement.
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred a month.
I, I wish I would have bought property.
I don't know. I should have.
Take nine hundred bucks a month for two thousand square.
Add any kind of a positive cash flow.
Well, again, thank you, and again, we're all in this together. I mean, I, I hope you don't feel like we're. Giving ultimatums or anything like that. You know, we're, we're just trying to do what we think is best, so we appreciate your time and. Effort, and we'll, we'll come up with a new proposal. We'll let you look at it and go from there.
Thank you for all you guys did.
No, really, yeah.
So I'll make a motion.
Close the meeting.
Thank you. Second?
Yeah, I'm second.
Okay, all in favor? You guys, I just wanna say, I really appreciate.
Wait, wait, did you turn off the recording?
Totally, I appreciate it all. We're still recording?